Yeah, we might want to wait just about a minute for everybody's to join and then we will be ready when you guys are.
All right. Is that that good? Or do do we have to wait?
No, we are good to go. We are ready when you are.
Okay. Good afternoon. This is the reg- regular and annual org- organizational board meet- me- meeting of the Ad- Adalanto Elementary School District is Tuesday, December fifteenth, twenty twenty. I hope ev- everyone had a good day. All right, let me go through this. I'm always iffy. So we're gonna go ahead and start at one, one point oh two, call to or order, one point oh three, roll, roll, roll call and quorum estab- establishment. Oh, and the time is five thirty-three.
Thank you. I'll take roll call. Trustee Benz.
Here.
Trustee La French.
La French here.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner present.
And I'll take note that Trustee Heinz and Trustee Akas will not be joining us tonight. Sorry, Heinz and Akas, yes.
And and board, just another note that all items for approval tonight will need to be unanimous in order to pass.
All right, thank you. Um, let's go ahead and start and go, go down to one point zero four. And let's please stand and do the pledge of allegiance, allegiance. Re- ready, be begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one individual with liberty and justice for all. All right, now to, to adopt, adoption of the agenda, agenda two, two point point oh one, per- proposed additions, deletions and adjustments in the order of the business.
And I do have some, I have an addition to agenda item. It'll be three point oh one A, administration of the oath of office to a newly elected, I'm sorry, elected trustees. Item three point oh one B will be the annual organization of election of officers. And then we have also an adjustment item eleven point two zero under fiscal. If approved, the impact to the general fund will be hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-six with forty-two cents. The recommendation for administrative hire is for Nicole Peterson, elementary school principal for Gus Franklin Junior STEM School. Salary hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-two statutory benefits, twenty thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven with fifty cents. Health and welfare sixteen thousand four hundred and six with ninety-two, a total of a hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-six with forty-two cents.
All right, thank, thank you. Um, two point zero two, adoption of the agenda. I, I need a, a, a mo- mode motion to, to adopt.
Trustee Turner, I motion that we adj- adopt the agenda as stated with the co- the additions to, for approval.
Thank, thank you. And sec- second?
I second.
And I will need a vote.
Trustee Benz.
I.
Trustee La French.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna go to three, three point oh zero, zero, one. The ed- admin- administration of the oath of off- office to the newly elect- elected trustees. And I'm gonna hand that over to Dr. Mitch- Mitchell.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to both our newly elected board members, both trustee Christine Turner and trustee Holly Akis. And so tonight we have trustee Turner here in present. And so trustee Turner, if I can have you stand and raise your right hand, please. And if you so choose, please place your left hand on the Bible. And please repeat after me. I, Christine Turner.
I, Christine Turner.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the state, and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
And, I'm sorry.
That I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will.
Well.
Well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties of which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, trustee executives. I mean, trustee Turner, thank you.
Congratulations.
Welcome to the board. We have a new, a new rookie board member. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratu- all right. Okay, so now we're gonna go, three point oh one B, annual org- organization, e- election of of officers and vote voting representative for the, the annual October meeting of school representatives. I need a mo- motion, I guess, to, to o- open or prove.
Trustee Benz, this will be a motion to go ahead and accept three point oh one, the annual organization. The following will be the nomination of president.
Okay, so I need a mo- 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 motion to accept.
I motion to accept.
And I'm gonna need a sec- second.
A second.
And a vote.
Trustee Benz.
I.
Trustee La French.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
All right. So now I need, we will go on to take a nom- nominate, nati- nomination for a board pres- president.
I nominate trustee Christine Turner for president.
Okay, and I sec- second. So now we take a vote.
Trustee Benz.
I.
Trustee La French.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
The vote passes three po- three to one, zero, sorry.
Yes, sorry, I forgot to do, do that.
That's okay.
Okay, so now we, we, we go, go on to clerk and I need to take a, I need, need a nom- nominate, nati- nation for clerk.
Okay, trustee Turner, I nominate La Shawn La French as clerk, board clerk.
And I sec- second. And now we need to take a vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
The vote passes three zero.
Vote passes three. Team, teamwork, teamwork. Okay, here we go. A vote, now I need a nom- nom- nominate, nati- nation for the board rep- representative.
I nominate Christine, Christina Benz for representative for annual October meeting of school representatives.
A second.
All right. Okay, and I need a vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
Okay, the vote pass, passes three zero zero. Okay, so then we're at three point oh two, the an- annual organization. We are go- go- going to rec- recognizing out go- going off officers and wel- welcoming new newly elected of officers. So at this time, we're gonna take time to, you know, re- recognize those who are go- going out and welcoming the ones who are, have now been elected. So I want, want to thank pre- president Heinz for step- stepping up last year to help guide our school. And this hasn't been an easy year. So, and I, as a clerk, I enjoyed it. I, I did. I, I learned a lot. And I hope one, one day I can do, do it again, ca- because it wa- was fun. It was. Would anybody else like to say anything?
Um, I would like to say that I know it was a difficult year, um, you know, for our board president. For our board clerk, you know, um, we spent half of the year at home and on Zoom. We all learned how to do Zoom meetings and, you know, and I know that those are two difficult positions. And I wish trustee Heinz well. I understand that she's under the weather right now. So I hope that, you know, she's home taking care of herself and I wish her the best. And trustee Benz, you were amazing. And I know that you had to handle the meeting a couple of times like you are tonight. And you stepped up like a pro. And, you know, as board president, I will be bringing you in with me to set the agenda so you could get more experience doing that. So when, when your opportunity come, you'll be able to, you know, take that position and run with it. And that's all I have.
All right, thank, thank you.
If I, if I could just say, wanted to thank trustee Heinz for her service as president and wanted to thank her wherever she is and wish her well as well. And also like to thank you, trustee Benz, for your services clerk. It's a pleasure working with you. Enjoyed our time together and looking forward to many more opportunities. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right. Okay, um, last one please. Okay, um, three point oh three of the annual org- organization. Uh, point, appointment of the soup, soup superintendent as sec- secretary to, to the board. I need a mo- motion.
A motion that we appoint the superintendent as secretary to the board.
And I need a set second.
Second.
And I need a vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
It passed, pet palaces, three zero, zero. Okay, now we're gonna go down to three point zero four of, um, approval of sched- schedule for the reg- regular board me- me- meetings for the rema- remainder of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year.
Trustee Benz, if I, if I may, uh, make a comment about the, the calendar that came up a couple of times in my conversations with board members. This week, I just wanted to clarify for the public as well as the board. You'll see here, board, that this schedule takes us through June thirtieth. It's my intention to bring back another calendar around April to approve from July to June, uh, going into twenty, uh, two thousand twenty-two. So sorry for the confusion. Just wanted to write our years so that we're on a school calendar and not on a fiscal calendar as we've been on before. So these days will take us through June and then prior to June, we'll ask the board to approve the calendar from July twenty twenty-one to June twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so can, can I get a mo- mo- motion?
Trustee Turner, I motion that we approve the regularly scheduled board meetings for the remaining of this school year with an emphasis that will be coming back to you in April with a, a new calendar for the next school year, for twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Second.
Okay, um, all right, and we need a, a, a vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
And it passed, it passes three zero. Okay, so now we go on to close sess- session deck, doc- doc- regulations. We will be ta- taking it, items four point zero one, four point zero two, and four point zero three.
Do I have to reread all those? Or yet? We can just move on now to five point one, public comment.
Okay, so now we're at five point zero, zero, one, uh, pub- public com- comment period. For it, items listed on this agenda and non-agenda i- items within the su- subject mat- matter jur- jurisdiction of the gov- governing board, board, five point oh two, do, do we, we have, and anyone?
Yes, madam clerk, I'd like to invite Lisa Martinelli before the board to speak. You may unmute yourself. Thank you.
Good evening, board and, and the executive team. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. I am Lisa Martinelli and I'm on the negotiations team for the ADTA. And, you know, I applied to be on the team because I am pretty vocal. And if I'm going to be vocal, I have to put my money where my mouth is, so to say. So, um, anyway, I decided that it would be very important for me to take this part in representing our, our body. So personally, I voted no to the COLA offer that we were given, uh, I guess it was last year, a little over a year ago. And I, I voted no because we weren't told exactly how much the district received in, in COLA funds. And it was asked on several different occasions from day one, you know, how much, how much money is the district bidding? And for some reason, this information just never seemed to come out until the very end when voting took place. So we found out on the last day, when, or the first day that voting started, that the district received almost fifteen percent increase in COLA, in COLA funds. And and we were offered two percent and then an extra two percent the next year. And the argument was that the district had a cost of living adjustment also. But that's not always the case. And of course, in, in our district, we have to negotiate the, um, the settlement, what we're going to get from COLA. So that's understood. So the union tried to be transparent and, and give concessions, tried to understand, tried to listen to the district. But the district answered almost every time, status quo, status quo. And they wouldn't even budge until the very end when they offered this little bit. And, you know, there were a lot of new people who had come on board and they were afraid of i- if we held out, that we wouldn't, you know, that we wouldn't, it might not have been successful. Now that we understand, we're coming into, uh, this year and we had the increase in our health cost. So it effectively put us at a, at a pay cut. What we, what we're receiving now is less than what we receiving before we were given the cost of living adjustment from the district. And so I'm asking you and, and everyone who works on the board and the executive team to really think about this as you're going in to your bargaining, um, into your bargaining sessions and into your closed session, that you think about this, that our teachers are now behind several districts in our high desert. We also have a, a two point, a twenty-six point five million dollar surplus in funds, which is about eight times the suggested three point one million or three percent. And I wanted to also point out that I really appreciate the new guidelines and the meeting norms and the speed of trust behaviors that have been brought in by our new, uh, our new cabinet. And, um, but I feel sometimes that these speed of trust behaviors are violated and need to be rectified over this time. So I'm just asking, as, as we're making progress going forward, that we think about these speed of trust behaviors. Uh, we talked straight to each other, we demonstrate respect, we create transparency, right wrongs, show loyalty, deliver results, get better, confront reality, clarify expectations, practice accountability, listen first, keep commitments, extend trust. And so if you would please, as you're going into this meeting, think about this and think about how we want to move together, to work together as a team. I would really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Um, thank you. Is there, and anyone else who is speak- speaking?
Yes, madam clerk, and then one, one, the board, uh, board and cabinet want to thank Ms. Martinelli for her comments. Thank you so much. Like to invite, uh, the board invites Jennifer Radar to speak on Close Session Matters. Jennifer, you may unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Mitchell, board trustees and cabinet. I come to you this evening with a heavy heart. We teachers have completely revamped our programs, our teaching styles, our curriculum. We've learned new teaching platforms, spent untold amounts of money on distance learning supports and media. Many of us cry regularly not being able to see our students in person and definitely not being able to reach those in the most dire of academic needs. We have endured training that just touches the tip of the iceberg. Platitude about student engagement and reminders to take care of yourself and breathe. We have been, become semi-experts on more tech- technology than we ever dreamed was possible. We have collaborated and problem solved and supported one another. We function daily and we function quite well, actually, with children who experience lagging computer responses, frequent kickoff of Zoom and non-functional microphone speakers or cameras, yet we persevere. During the last professional development day and indeed at these board meetings, we could heard praise and thanks and acknowledgement of our hard work and expertise under truly untenable circumstances. There appears to be lip service to appreciation for us and an appearance of plenty of support. And yet, and yet, at the bargaining table, we are laughed at and denigrated. There is no appreciation shown us at that table. Again, we are beginning to experience a suspicion, the lack of respect, the distrust. There seems to be misgivings about our dedication and about our intentions. All we are asking for, all we have ever asked for, is a modicum of respect as demonstrated by the comparable salary and benefits as our neighbors in the other districts enjoy. We are falling behind again. It seems we fight every year for the acknowledgement that our population is a unique one, considering we have such a huge population of foster children, children whose families desperately need the food program to survive, children whose parents do not speak English at home, and now children for whom working technology is hypothetical at best. We need to continue to attract the best and brightest and we need to have a contract that keeps them here. We deserve to have a pay scale that reflects our area, that is at least on par with our neighboring districts, if not better. Our board pays lip service to wanting Adelanto to be a leader in our area, a vanguard of sorts, especially as we struggle to function in the age of COVID. But you seem satisfied that we trail behind the rest of the desert in terms of salary and benefits. It feels often like we are dealing with hostility from you, our board. If you didn't care deeply for education, love our students, appreciate our district and respect us, the backbone of this education in this district, why, why did you bother to run for the Board of Trustees? Room should be made for people who are truly interested in helping our schools and respecting our teachers. Appreciation, acknowledgement and appropriate compensation, create an atmosphere where people do their very best and go over and above. Well, we are indeed going over and above. Where is the respect and compensation?
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Ms. Radar. Those are, uh, those, those are the end of our, uh, public, public comments.
Okay, so then we go on to six point oh one, re- recess to close se- session. I need a mo- motion.
I motion.
And I need a set second.
Trustee Turner, a second.
And I need a vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
Okay, the pa- path of process three zero, zero, I will see you in closed sess-
And the time, five fifty-nine.
Time is five fifty-nine. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're good, Christine?
Yes, this thing, I don't know, it look, it's different today. Yes, I'm different. I'll see you in a minute. See. Okay, thank you. Okay, bye-bye. Okay, bye-bye.
Trustee Benz, it's 7:21.
Okay, are the other trusty Rusties here? I see trustee love fridge.
And I believe we're only waiting for trustee Turner.
Okay.
Okay, let's see if she's can get on successfully. Xenia, could you contact trustee Turner and see if she's okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We are working on getting her on Zoom, just one more minute. I believe trustee Turner is with us. Trustee Turner.
I don't see her in the meeting yet.
Okay.
Oh, one second. Okay, trustee Turner, can you unmute your mic?
Here I am.
Okay, we see you.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go on to call to to ord order the time is 7:26. And set 7.02 roll roll call and quorum establishment, please.
Trustee Benz.
Benz here.
Trustee La French.
La French present.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner present.
Okay, we have quorum. 8.01 an announcement of report portable act actions take taken dur during close session. The the board took action in close session to accept the final settlement agreement for OAH case It was moved by trustee Benz and second by trustee Turner and the motion passed 30. Okay, so now we're going to go down to 9.01 public comm comment period for open set session items own only do we have any? Uh, as Dr. Dr. Mitch Mitchell, you had no no sound you you were unmuted but couldn't hear you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay.
About that trust trustee business or no public comments, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. So we go on to 10 adoption of the oh, I'm sorry, sorry. A 9.003 A DTA and C C S E A rep represent sentitives. No. Okay. All right, so we go down to 10 adoption of the minutes 10.001 boardman minutes approve as written and or order filled reg regular board me meeting of November 10th 2020. Can I get a motion?
Trustee Turner, a motion that we adopt the minutes of the last board meeting.
And a sec second.
A second.
Okay. And we need a vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
Okay, it pass passes 300 now we go on to the 11 consent agenda. We are taking items of 11 11.02 through 11.22 or 2122. I know what I was thinking. Does any trustee want to pull an item?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I want to pull 11.03.
Okay.
11.07.
Mm hmm.
11 09. No, skip on 11 09. Uh. 11 11. 11 12. 11 15. 11 16. Um, I want to pull 1120 just so we can say congratulations.
Okay.
And 1121. And 1122.
Trust trustee La La French, is there anything you want to to pull?
I have no items to pull.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve the items 11 11.02 to 11 11.22. Min minus the items that trustee Turner asked be be pulled, which were 11 03, 11 07, 11 11 11 11 11.12, 11 15, 11 6, 11 20, 11 21, and 11 22.
Trustee.
Motion clarification.
It was 11.16, not 11.06.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, that's okay.
I'm a motion that we approve the remaining concern agenda minus those items that was just called off.
Okay.
And that's trustee Turner.
Yes, ma'am. La French, do you want a sec second?
Second, I second, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, so now we need a vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Justy Turner.
Justy Turner, I.
Okay, so it passes 300. So now we're going to go to 12, which are the 12.001s, the the items we remove from the consent agenda. So now I got to open it up for discussion first, right, on each thing?
Yes, correct. 1103, we need a motion and a second and then.
Okay, so I I need a mo mo motion for the discussion on 11 11.03.
Just to turn our motion to approve 11.03.
And a sec second?
A second.
Okay, and now we open it up, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, yes, I pulled this item, the school site plans of SIPS. Because I just want to make a comment that I've been in deep conversation with Dr. Mitchell regarding this item. And I understand why he wanted to group the school site plans the way they are put on the consent agenda. I just want to say that uh the prior, the previous way that the board approved school site plans where the principals would present their school site plans and the board would ask questions and that gave the board a idea of what was going on at the school site. I know that we're in COVID now and I agree, I agree with Dr. Mitchell, but you know, he assured me that the principals will present to the board and I feel that that's important, that the principals present their school site and let the board know what's going on right now. Like I said, when in COVID, you know, doing distant learning, the board has not been able to go visit any school sites this year at all. And I know the plans has got to be approved. So I agree to, you know, the way they're being presented tonight. But however, I feel that it is important that the principals, you know, come and present their school sites and what's going on at their school, their successes, you know, what they're working on. And it's more important right now during COVID that we we get a clear understanding of how our children are accepting the distant learning and how we're doing. I am getting calls from parents. Some are happy with the distant learning. Some students are doing very well and I and that's wonderful, but we do have students that are not doing so well. And and Dr. Mitchell and I have been in deep conversation about that. But um, you know, we do have, I have all the site plans here and I've been going through them, but it's different than having the principals present. Um, so with that being said, that's all I have on that. I am looking forward to hearing from the principals starting in January about the development at your school site, your good things that's happening, you know, your student achievement. So I'm looking forward to those conversations. So with that being said, that's all I have on the school cycling.
Okay, I want wanted to 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 say I I like this. Now, will these be made of available to to like parent parents if they ask or is it just an in district thing? Because there there's a lot, a lot, a lot of great information on there that I think parents parents could use.
Yes, thank you for the question, trustee Benz. Yes, these are intended to be very public documents and user friendly, parent friendly, community friendly. We know that much of the school plan itself is a compliance document. It allows us to spend categorical dollars, a lot of legalese type information in there. They're not as user friendly. And so under Dr. Williams' leadership, we asked our principals to to develop executive summaries and they came out really great. I know principals worked a whole lot on them. And so thank you, principals, as well as your teams for developing those executive summary. Super, they're really nice. And they're intended to be very public documents. And so our expectation is those documents be out in the out in the front desk of the schools and and eventually get translated into Spanish and so that our parents can access what's happening as it relates to dollars, programs, services at our school. So thanks so much for that question, trustee Benz.
I trust trustee La La French, do you have any quick questions or comments?
I don't have any comments. My question was answered. I wanted to know whether or not if it was available for the parents.
Okay, okay. So now we got to vote that this one went in, right?
Right.
Oh, I would like to say something. Yes, this template is amazing. This overview, these are really, really good.
Yes.
If we could send these home to parents, that would be great. It's almost like a newsletter, but just to let them know what's going on at the school site. These are really good. I like them. They're very colorful and, you know, easy to read. I like that.
Thank you for the feedback, trustee and we certainly look into sending these home. But thank you.
Okay, okay, so now we take a vote.
Correct.
Okay.
See Benz.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Hi. Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Okay, if Pat past this 300, now I need a motion to open up 11.07.
Hey, my motion that we approve.
And I'll sec second.
Um, are we in discussion?
Yes.
Dr. Mitchell, could you talk about this agenda item for me, please?
Yeah, absolutely. This is a contract with the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools to put for their staff to provide our ELD teachers some some critical professional development to improve instructional practice for our students learning to speak, read, and write English.
Between, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last part. I'm on my phone. I'm sorry.
Oh, no worries. So this is a consultant with the San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools, an expert on ELD, English language development, and they'll be providing some support and staff development for our teachers to improve instructional practices as it relates to our to improve instructional practices as it relates to our English language learners.
Okay. And I see that the analysis on it is participating students. What students will be able to, is this district-wide? Because I'm saying on the back that students will gain experience as writers, filmmakers, web designers, playwrights, artists. So who will be, what students will be offered this, to get this, um, this professional development?
Thank you for the question, I'm gonna turn those details over to Dr. Williams, could you provide that answer, Dr. Williams?
trustee Turner, which document are you referencing?
Yeah, that's wrong.
Eleven point zero seven, I'm looking at the agenda item, the analysis.
So the analysis is, the purpose of this training is to provide teachers in the district with ideas and strategies on how to provide ELD instruction and explore critical areas to keep in mind in the implementation of the ELD program? Is that the one you're looking at as well?
If, if, if you turn to the back, it says participating students will gain experience as writers, filmmakers, web designers, playwrights, artists, as they come, as they create unique contemporary expressions of history.
It sounds like trustee Turner that you may be referencing History Day.
The, the History Day, yeah, you're looking at History Day. Which one is that, uh, Dr. Williams?
Looking at, I'm looking at eleven point zero seven academic services, approved consulting services for San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools, SBCSS for English Language Development, ELD, and bilateral, biliteracy program.
So trustee Turner.
Maybe the backside got flipped around.
Yes, cause I think that's part of eleven oh six.
See, I, do you, can you see my screen, can you see me?
Your, your hands in the way.
It's on a, it's, it's, it's two-sided, so that's why I just flipped it over. So that could be.
Yeah.
Because I'm looking at the physical impact is nineteen hundred and fifty dollars from the general fund?
No.
No?
No.
Nope, okay. So I got printed wrong.
Yeah, that's the History Day.
Okay, okay, so can I trust the back of all of these? I mean, I could trust the back of all of these. Okay, but we'll see as it come up, and that was my question on that one. Okay, so this is something entirely different.
A little bit about the History Day.
No, well, I didn't pull the History Day.
Okay.
So I was just questioning this and what students will be able to be a part of that. So I can go ahead, if that's not what this is, maybe I don't have the rest of this. That was printed out for me. Uh, okay. Well, uh.
I can just say, if it's okay, that students in grade four through eight will have the opportunity to participate in our, in our county History Day, which is gonna be happening from February twenty-second to March sixth.
Well, I guess what I was more interested in, I guess because the back was printed wrong. I wasn't, you know, questioning History Day or the Science Day, I knew what that's about. But I was just wondering, it said something on the front, but it didn't. I was wondering what students will be able to participate in that. Because ELD students is something different, why would they? My question was, why would they be participating as experienced writers and filmmakers and web designers, you know, and, and selected to do that? And how would they be selected? So that whole agenda item is uh, that whole analysis is different. That was printed and given to me when I asked for copies of the agenda. So I'm sorry, that's what I received, that's why I had questions on it. And maybe a lot of this, I have questions on all of this, maybe the backside was printed wrong. So we'll see as we go along. So that's all I have on that, you don't have to go into the explanation of History Day, uh, History Day.
Okay, so let's take a vote to approve eleven point zero seven.
trustee Benz.
Ben's eye.
trustee Turner.
trustee Turner, I.
trustee La French.
La French, I.
Okay, Pat, Paul says three zero zero. So now we're gonna go on to eleven point eleven. I need a mo- mo- motion.
Motion for discussion.
Okay. And I need a sec- second?
trustee Turner, I second.
Okay, now we're o- o- open for the discussion.
Okay, I think I pulled all of the professional development. You know, just for Dr. Mitchell to talk about the professional development. We've been getting a lot of professional development. I know that's something that the district has been lacking over the years. And so I know a lot of money is being spent and I'm looking at a lot of different schools that are coming out of different funds. Some, some schools, the professional development is coming out of the CSI fund. Some are coming out of, I'm even the LCFF fund, supplemental and concentrated fund. And so why, why the two different funds, Dr. Mitchell?
Thank you, trustee Turner. So in my superintendent's comments tonight, I'm gonna talk in detail about our professional learning and collaboration plans. Our, since I've gotten here, I've launched, I've introduced this model of staff development. Our principals and school leaders have been really good about en- enacting this, this, this paradigm shift that we're, we're leading here in terms of prioritizing professional development, professional collaboration among teachers to identify their own professional learning needs to accelerate student performance. So what you're seeing is a result of those plans having been completed over the last couple of weeks. And now principals are submitting various professional development and services to support the efforts of their stu- of their schools. I will speak about the model later during my superintendent's comments. Also, I spoke about the model about two or three times in my board letters to you, but I'm happy to talk about it tonight. And so I'm so happy to see that our schools are embracing this model. We, 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 we believe the key to moving schools is to grow the skill, knowledge, and capacity of, of, of school leaders and teachers to accelerate student performance, and so that's what you're seeing. In terms of the different funding sources, i- if you, if you recall, when I, when I first got here, I pushed a little bit more of the LCFF dollars to the schools for some site-based decision-making. Some of our schools did some tutoring efforts for our kids and many did some, some extra duty for teachers to collaborate and plan together. And then some still are using some of these dollars, including your Title I, your Title III, LCAP dollars, as well as CSI dollars to provide staff development. So you'll see a variety of site-based funds in, in the consent item for, for these pieces. We've, we, we are recommending all of these, they're, they've been highly scrutinized to make sure that they'll have a maximum effect on schools. And what you see here is a representative of site-based decisions. And I will speak in detail about it during my superintendent's comments tonight.
Okay, great, okay, that's all I have on that.
Okay, so, and I have no, no ques- questions, trust, trustee La, La, La French?
Questions.
Okay, so let's take, take a vote.
trustee Benz.
Ben's eye.
trustee La French.
La French, I.
trustee Turner.
trustee Turner, I.
Okay, Pat passes three zero. We go on to eleven point twelve. I need a motion to o- open up for the discuss- discussion.
trustee Turner, our motion that we approve.
And I need, need a sec- second?
A second, I'm sorry.
Okay. Okay, we're open for the discuss- discussion.
Okay, this is also go along with the professional development. So Dr. Mitchell has already talked about that, so you can call for the vote. I have no further questions on that.
Okay, so let, let's call for the vote.
trustee Benz.
Ben's eye.
trustee La French.
I.
trustee Turner.
trustee Turner, I.
Okay, and that pass, passes three zero. Okay, we, we go, go on to eleven point fifteen. I need a mo- motion to.
trustee Turner, our motion to approve.
A second.
All right, and we're o- open for the discuss- discussion.
I pulled this item only for just a discussion, an explanation, well, not really an explanation, just for trans- transparency. At the beginning, Dr. Mitchell, if you remember, I guess during COVID, we, we were, the, the state has allowed the districts to borrow money. And it's called the trans, could you talk about that, the trans financing program?
Yeah, happy to turn over to our resident expert and chief business official, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Kraus.
Chris, can you unmute him, please?
Yeah, Chris, he has a presentation later too, so.
Is he gonna talk about the trans, their tax and revenue anticipation note?
Yes, ma'am, but I, I think it's important to your point, trustee Turner, to tell the public what this is, so no one's alarmed.
Right.
Michael, are you able to, to unmute?
Yes, I believe I'm ready, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Great, okay, well, thank you, trustee Turner, for your question. And just to give you a brief background on this item, this agenda item, the state of California has imposed cash deferrals upon all districts in the state. It's kind of like if you expect to get paid on the first of the month and you don't get your money until the tenth of the month because the cash is not there, the state is doing the same thing to school districts. So we have to borrow money in order to make it from the first of the month, in that example, to the tenth of the month when we actually receive our cash from the state. And so what a tax revenue anticipation note does is it allows us to borrow funds if the deferrals continue to go through. We, again, we won't know until January when the governor comes out with his proposed budget, but at this time, we are expected to receive less cash in certain months next year. And so we need to be able to borrow funding in order to make our monthly obligations. And our monthly obligations for the knowledge of the public and the board are around eight to nine million a month. And so that's where we need at least the minimum amount of cash on hand to be able to make our obligations. So this agenda item will give us authority to be able to borrow enough funding if we need to as a district to make it through those cash deferrals.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, and that's all I have on that, I just wanted, you know, you know, just an explanation so the public can hear what that's about. And um so that we, everyone can understand what's happening to our dollars. Okay, and that's all I have on that.
Okay, so are we red, ready for, for a vote? Okay, can, can I have a vote, vote please?
trustee Benz.
Ben's eye.
trustee La French.
I.
trustee Turner.
trustee Turner, I.
Okay, and that passes three zero zero. So now we go on to eleven point sixteen. I need a mo- motion to approve.
Uh, motion to approve eleven point sixteen, approval of purchase warrants and warrant report.
And I need a se- second?
A second.
Okay, we're o- open for the discuss- discussion.
Okay, I pulled this um, um, item, I pulled our warrants because a lot of things were red, black to me and what we were paying. Dr. Mitchell and I had a conversation about this yesterday. My main concern, I'm, I'm concerned with a lot of it. One, this is on account payable for purchase, order report, it's page nine. Totally promotional water bottles for fifty-three thousand four hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-three cents. I looked that company up and um what, could, could someone explain this to me, what this is?
Absolutely.
Because with the description is water bottles, you know, that's a lot of money to pay for water bottles, especially when we don't have students in the schools. So what are we doing with that, tell me what that is?
Uh, Mr. Kraus, please, thank you.
Yes, thank you, trustee Turner, for your question. So as we have moved forward with COVID-nineteen pandemic since March, we are gearing up to bring students back at some point. Currently, if they were to come back today, all of our water fountains are off limits per CDC and the California Department of Public Health guidelines. They would not be able to use our water fountains to use, get water. And so one of the things that was recommended through several different avenues was to purchase twenty-eight ounce water bottles, reusable water bottles for all staff and all students in the district where they could keep them to themselves and bring water from home or some kind of fluid in them. And so the district went out and found the best deal we could through staff. And each water bottle was about four dollars and thirteen cents plus tax. And these are water bottles that we will distribute to all students and all staff in the district when we do bring people back. We also bought a extra supply, as we know that students may lose them or they may be damaged in the course of using them during a regular school day. So we did get some additional stock to keep in our warehouse in order that when those times come, that students request a new water bottle, we want to be able to provide them with one so that there's not that cross-contamination of using items that are right now currently off limits per the California Department of Public Health and the CDC. So we did try to find cheaper water bottles, but these are twenty-eight ounce plastic reusable water bottles that we are able, will be able to distribute at a certain time in the future.
Okay, and that is coming out of the COVID fund?
That is correct, that is coming out of the money that I'll talk about later tonight, but we had a deadline of December thirtieth to spend a large amount of money. And this is one of the items that our purchasing staff was instrumental in being able to find for us, to be able to supply our students and staff with these water bottles.
Okay. My next question is, and, and Dr. Mitchell, I asked you this, and I didn't hear back from you. Who is TechSmart? I'm showing that a purchase order, well, we paid forty-eight thousand dollars to TechSmart and then another five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. What do they do? What, what is that, if you, someone can explain that?
Mr. Kraus.
Absolutely, thank you for that question about TechSmart. And I'm going to also defer to Dr. Williams in a second, but the district has a coding program within the district and TechSmart is the company that assists our school sites with that coding program. And Dr. Williams, if you could just elaborate a little more on the coding program that TechSmart is involved in with our school sites?
You're on mute, Dr. Williams.
TechSmart is our, our, our training company that trains our staff who are involved in the coding program at several of our schools. And that's what this is about.
Is this also coming out of the COVID money?
Let me, um, that is coming after, out of our after-school program funding. So no, that's, that is, yes, it's coming out of our after-school Twenty First Century Grant. So it is, it, and it came to the board previously for approval. So it's coming from the ASPS grant.
The board, the board would have previously approved and consented of this contract.
Okay, okay, great.
This is the purchase order that goes with the contract.
Okay. Also, um, we talked about several vehicles being purchased. It's my understanding that any vehicle, vehicles that are purchased, they come to the board, you know, for approval, I don't remember approving vehicles for tech vehicles, one, tech vehicles, two. There were several other vehicles purchased. So how, how, how would these approve?
I, I, as we talked yesterday, I, I approve these, the day-to-day operations of the school district. I, as we talked yesterday, I approve these, the day-to-day operations of the school district. As I shared with you, there's a tight turnaround with the COVID dollars that need to be expended by December thirtieth. I asked for a recommendation from staff to expend these dollars in a prudent way. Staff identified the need to replace and add to our vehicles, especially given that we're delivering more food out there in support of the COVID issue as well as delivering technology across the district. And so, Mr. Kraus can give some detail on those particular vehicles.
Absolutely. Thank you, Trustee Turner, for that question. And to piggyback on Dr. Mitchell's comments, we did, we were notified by the county, they wanted a plan of action in early November to be able to spend the rest of our funding by December thirtieth. And so staff made recommendations, the superintendent, and some of those items included the need to, we identified the need to purchase additional vehicles. For instance, with our child nutrition services, they purchased two new refrigerated trucks to be able to assist with the Gravigo meal service out in the field. And so that way, the food is kept, can be kept in a truck sitting nearby in order to substantially be able to enhance our meal services out into the community with our families. Another vehicle, for instance, with the technology department is a transit van that's able to transport large amounts of computers since we have purchased millions of dollars over the last several months in Chromebooks and laptops and other computer devices. So the tech department's able to transport that out to the sites in a quicker manner and get those deployed into the hands of staff and students. Also, one of the other trucks that we purchased was for our HVAC servicing of over eight hundred HVAC units in the district. We have a great MNO team, and in order to be able to change out the filters, maintain those eight hundred HVAC systems with new bipolar ionizers and other devices, they purchased transit vehicles to be able to shuttle equipment and tools around from site to site dedicated to our HVAC systems. And all of these expenditures were ran through our auditors for approval, as far as being allowed with the COVID funds, as well as the consultation with the San Antonio County Superintendent Schools Office and CDE. And so I do apologize again for the not being able to bring this item until now before the board, but if we were to have waited until December fifteenth, the vehicles would not be able to have been delivered by December thirtieth per the company that we purchased them from, the vehicle companies. And so, Dr. Mitchell was fully aware, and he did see the need as well as staff did for these vehicles.
Okay.
I also want to put in just for the viewing public that that these COVID nineteen dollars or one-time dollars that were allocated to the district to mitigate the costs associated with a school shutdown and with distance learning. And so, just so the board, the public knows that these are not our regular dollars that can go to staff or benefits or compensation for staff, that these dollars were given to us by the federal government with the strict compliance issue that they had to be spent by December thirtieth, which is in a couple weeks. So, thanks so much.
So will there be, do we have to do a reconciliation with the federal government on how we spent that money? And because at the last board meeting, and I did get a summary of what, what some of the things that was purchased with the COVID money funding, but that wasn't a part of that. We didn't talk about the vehicles. That wasn't given to the board on that, and also the water bottles. That wasn't given to the board. So, do we have to reconcile how we spent that money to the penny? And basically show how we spent it? Do you have to submit something like that? I'm sure we do.
Mr. Kraus.
Absolutely. Thank you for that question, and yes, you are correct. We do have to submit to the CDE how we spent those funds, and it, we have every anticipation of bringing to the board in January a presentation related to the COVID expenditures, line item by line item, so that the board and the public can clearly see how we spent those funds. Absolutely.
Great, I appreciate that. And I noticed that we got, we spent, like you said, we spent over a couple million dollars on teachers' computers, so every teacher got a new computer. Am I correct in saying that?
They should, if they have not already, not only laptops, but also we are upgrading every classroom computer in the district as well, and front office for front office staff. So, that's our anticipation and goal, and we've purchased everything. Now we just have to get it deployed into the field. And so, we're excited to be able to have, been able to do that.
Great, and all of our students have Chromebooks, new Chromebooks. Can I say that?
I will defer to Dr. Williams on that, but I believe that the majority, if not all, students have been issued new Chromebooks. Dr. Williams?
So thank you for the question, Trustee Turner. We were given a grant from CDE where they donated approximately seventeen hundred new Chromebooks. In addition to that, we purchased approximately twenty-five hundred devices to make sure that our inventory was at the working condition it needed to be. So not one hundred percent of our students have new devices. All of our devices are working, and we have a surplus due to the items that were donated in addition to the new items that we purchased. And we purchased tablets for our TK and K students. So we feel that we have adequate inventory to ensure that all of our students have working devices.
Okay, have we gotten any complaints from parents that the Chrome devices are not working? Have you received any complaints?
I have not received any complaints. I know in the beginning, we had some devices that had missing keys and things of that sort, and that's why I worked with the IT department to purchase those additional devices, I believe approximately twenty-five hundred, and then in addition to the sixteen hundred that we were given by CDE. And that allowed us to be able to trade out any devices that parents had issues regarding. So I feel that all of our devices are working, and we do have a process in IT for parents who need to change out due to damage or things of that sort. So that is ongoing.
Just to add to that, Trustee Turner, our principals are reporting a constant flow of parents that are coming to the school to get repaired devices or replaced devices. And so, we know that these things happen with kids and adults using, using devices. And so we are prepared to swap them out or repair them and get them back out to the field. So our IT department is doing a phenomenal job with that. Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have on the warrants. I will talk about, I guess, when we get to, we're gonna talk about the COVID money because I want to talk about hotspots and how is that working. So that's all I have on the warrants, but the conversation will continue about the hotspots and if children are able to log on. And, and I did hear during a trustee comment, well, not trustee comment, but a public comment period that distant learning, some of the issues that were distant learning. And I had an issue with my computer today, as you all know. But, so that's all I have on the warrants.
Trustee La, La, La French, do you have any ques- questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, and I have spoke to Dr. Mitchell already. I just want to, you know, say that when we're given things like this, especially for me as a trustee, which I did bring to Dr. Mitchell's attention at the same way that Michael just explained, it's better for us to know what it is that we're voting on before we get ready to vote on it. But I did speak to Dr. Mitchell already that explained to me. So going forward, I understand that this was COVID money. I understand that it was a timeframe, and we weren't able to get this information ahead of time. So going forward, it is my hope that we will receive information ahead of time, so then we're able to know what kind of vehicle, what the vehicle was for. You know, what the water bottles were actually for. You know, you just don't see big, huge numbers and don't know before you say yes to it. I appreciate it. Thank you. I have understanding. No need for a comment, Dr. Mitchell.
No, no, Ms. La French, I just wanted to commit to the board my commitment to you to assure that I bring these big-ticket items for your review and discussion in a normal process. And so, so thanks for bringing that to my attention, and you certainly have my commitment going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so let's take a vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
Okay, it pa- passes three zero zero. Okay, so now we go on to eleven twenty. I need a mo- motion to approve.
Trustee Turner, motion to approve.
And a second, all right. La French, second. We're o- open for de- discussion.
Okay, I pulled this item because it's administrative new hire, and it's the principal at Gus Franklin. Ms. Peterson? Is she still there? Generally, in a regular board meeting, we generally have the new hire stand and wave and say hi. But if she's on, if you could unmute her so she can say hello to everyone. She's not a new person to the district. Actually, she was assistant principal. And she was just voted to be made head principal at Gus Franklin.
And, and thank you very much, and I look, look forward to the opportunity. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Peterson. We're looking forward to your, your leadership, and so thankful that you've joined our principal team. And so, principals, we're gonna look for you to rally around Ms. Peterson and get her up to speed and help her out as much as possible, and we're looking forward to your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yes, congra- congratulations.
Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Okay, so I need a vote on this.
We have a first by Trustee Turner and a second by La French. I'll take the vote. Trustee Benz.
I.
Trustee La French. Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
And that, that pass passes three zero zero. Okay.
Trustee Benz, you can lump eleven twenty-one and eleven twenty-two together. These were the professional developments.
Okay, so we will vote on eleven twenty-one and eleven twenty-two. I need a motion. Okay, so I have a mo- motion from Trustee Turn- Turner.
A second.
And a second, second from Trustee La French, and we are o- open for discussion.
Okay, these were the professional development. I pulled all of them, and so Dr. Mitchell will give a report during his superintendent remarks on that. So we can call for the vote.
Okay.
Both eleven twenty-one and eleven twenty-two.
Okay.
Okay, I'll take the vote. Trustee Benz.
I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
Okay, though, those two I, are you, items passed, three zero. All right, so let, let's go on to thirteen, thirteen staff re- reports and presentations. Thir- thirteen point zero zero one.
Dr. Williams, did you brief the board on thirteen oh one and then followed by thirteen oh two?
So board, thirteen oh one is the Williams Settlement Annual Report. It's basically an annual report from the county explaining that they conducted a review at seven of our schools as it relates to instructional materials and facilities. And during the twenty nineteen, when they went out within the first four weeks of school, there were no findings. So the county requires that we bring this report to the board as an agenda is item for information.
Any questions, board? And so this, this report is for nineteen twenty. And then thirteen point oh two is our current Williams report. Dr. Williams?
Thirteen oh two board is the quarterly report. This is the first quarter. They usually visit in October, January, April, and July. And they visit Desauer Schools one to three based on our academic performance index. In this review, they look at instructional materials, school facilities, the SARC report, as well as teacher assignments, and there were no findings on this report. And again, we're required to bring it as an agenda is item for information to the board.
Great. Any questions, board, about either of the Williams reports?
I have none.
I have none.
Thank you, board. We, so that takes us to thirteen point oh three. Trustee Benz?
Yes, we need the pre- presentation of the twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, first interim re- report.
Great. So board, thank you so much. We're so pleased to bring a positive certification regarding our budget, and Mr. Kraus and his team has worked really hard to get us, get this report done. We're also happy to give you your presentation with, which, for the purpose of being transparent with our, with our staff, as well as our public. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Kraus to begin his report.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mitchell, and good evening, members of the board and members of the community, everyone that's here with us this evening. I am pleased to be able to present the first interim report for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. So what exactly is the first interim report? It is the snapshot in time that tells us our financial health from the period of July first until October thirty-first. So it just covers that section of the year, the fiscal year, which starts July first, and tells us how much the revenue we've received and how much expenditures we have spent out. It also shows us, as you will see in a few slides, the multi-year projection. So we are not only required by the state and by the County Office of Education to present the current year's fiscal situation, but we also have to project out the next two years. So as we move forward, I will be discussing this current year and then the next two fiscal years as it relates to our fiscal health. And then again, as we move forward, the next interim report will be at second interim in March, and we'll see that as we move forward in the slideshow. So here are some of the highlights of what I will be discussing with everyone this evening. We're going to look at the state financial outlook, how that's looking for our state, the first interim budget, some impacts to our budget. Also, as I mentioned, our multi-year projections. We'll give a summary of the first interim, and then we'll talk about next steps as we move forward as a district. So here are some summary of the highlights of the first interim. So as Dr. Mitchell stated earlier, the certification is positive, which means the district can meet its obligations for the current year and the out years. Every district has the opportunity to look at their health and decide if they are positive, which means all three years we can meet our obligations. A qualified, which means we can meet two out of the three, or a negative, which means we can only meet none of the obligations in any of the years. And so it's always great to be able to issue a positive certification as a district. Another highlight is that federal revenues are higher in twenty twenty-one as the COVID, the one-time COVID funding was given to districts by both the federal government and the state government. So as we look at our numbers, you will see that highlighted in our numbers about the one-time COVID funding that is restricted to certain categories and also has timelines as to when it has to be spent. So you'll see that in our federal revenues. We also have our historic deficit spending. When we looked back and then looking forward at our deficit spending, and basically what that is, is that we are spending more in expenditures than we are taking in as revenue. And a couple of things we'll talk about that cause that are no cost of living adjustment in this current year. We have our normal STIRS, PERS increases and our step column and range and step increases. So every year, those increase on a yearly basis. And if our revenues are flat, then we have to dip into our reserves. As you will see, our earning fund balance do offset that. Also, the next one, number four, the earning fund balance goes from twenty-four million to fourteen point three million. But again, the district is able to meet our state requirement three percent in all three years. And we'll show you those numbers in our multi-year projection. And then during the last slide, during the California School Board Association Annual Conference that was held this month, we believe that funds are not received from the state in twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three. We will have to reduce our ongoing expenditures at a We will have to reduce our ongoing expenditures at a minimum of four million each year. And again, I will show you what that looks like in slides coming up as we move forward. So what are some of the assumptions as we look at our first interim? And number one, revenues remain flat through twenty-two, twenty-three. As of currently, right now, the governor has not provided a cost of living adjustment in this current year or the out years. So that is giving us really revenues that are remaining flat at this time for first interim. We also again see our expenditures increase due to our obligations and also contributions to our special education fund, as is with every district. Special education contributions happen with every district related to that. Again, we look at our cost of living adjustment, our COLA, you might be familiar with it. It's at zero percent all the way through twenty-two, twenty-three. We were supposed to get two point three one percent this current year. We received nothing. And back in May, we were actually going to receive negative seven percent or more on our funding. So they were going to reduce, as the state decided their budget, they were going to reduce it a tremendous amount of money. But eventually, they settled on zero percent COLA. So that really hurt us as well as other districts related to not getting that additional revenue that normally helps offset our cost of living as far as like utilities and our pension obligations and our normal salary and benefits increases. Number four talks about state deferrals. You may have heard about the TRAN, the tax revenue anticipation note, that the district would have to potentially borrow money to meet our obligations if the state keeps those deferrals in place and does not provide enough cash for our district to be able to meet its monthly obligations. And so what is our monthly obligation around? It's between eight million and nine million dollars. And so that's how much at a minimum we need as a district to be able to make payroll and to pay our obligations such as accounts payable to vendors and other things like utilities. And so we need that cash to pay them because people can't wait to get paid. We want to make sure that our staff get paid on time, and so we have to borrow money at a low interest rate. And then when the state pays us back, we will then be able to pay that TRAN back. So the number five is interesting because you might recall this year, the state kept us frozen at February twenty-ninth of twenty twenty as far as our enrollment in ADA. So that's where they froze it, and then this year is what we call a hold harmless year. They will not affect our funding because of the COVID nineteen pandemic. We don't know what they're going to do next year. We're hoping in January with the governor's budget proposal, we will find out more. But at this time, we have kept our enrollment flat until second interim in March, at which time we will definitely adjust whichever way we need to go with our enrollment. And that will give us a better picture again in January, once the governor comes out with what the state will do on our funding related to our enrollment in ADA. And then the other assumption is that one-time COVID nineteen funds are expended and no more funding is allocated. So we don't expect any more funds, but there may be if Congress passes something in the next several months. Depending on what they decide, there could be more COVID nineteen one-time funds for districts. We are optimistic that that potentially could occur. So now let's just briefly talk about the state financial outlook. And this information comes from the Legislative Analyst Office in November twenty twenty. They put out a guide to the state and to school districts that talk about how the state is doing. And the number one bullet up there talks about the big three taxes that where the state gets their money. Personal income, sales and use, and corporate taxes. And so they are trending twenty-two percent higher than expected than what they thought in July in the enacted state budget. So that's a positive. Number two talks about a projected surplus of twenty-six billion in twenty-one, twenty-two. But at this point in time, cash deferrals, as I mentioned earlier, still exist, so we still may have to borrow money. We may not, and that'll be a good thing if we do not. And so we just have the ability now with the board approving that earlier this evening. Number three talks about unemployment was lower than expected since March twenty twenty when COVID nineteen really hit. Now, that could change based on these newest numbers of COVID nineteen and what we're currently seeing in these last few weeks related to the COVID nineteen cases. So, but as of November, unemployment was lower because of that, but it could start to creep back up again. We also are seeing consumer spending rebound to within ten percent of pre-pandemic lever- levels. What that means is that people are confident in their ability to stay employed, make money, and go out there and spend that money in the state, helping to fill the coffers of the state tax revenues. And then if you follow the stock market, it is reaching new highs based on the overall different industries that are out there. We've had a high, I believe, of thirty thousand at the Dow Jones. And so that's one of the things that we're seeing in the state, and that does affect the revenues that come into the state and then how the state allocates their money to school districts. So we're optimistic here that things might be a little better come January when the governor proposes his budget. Let me make sure I didn't miss a slide. Okay, so now we want to talk about the projected twenty twenty-one revenues and expenditures. So here is just a graph showing you, pie chart showing you the revenues on the left side and the expenditures on the right side. And I will go into the numbers on the next slide so you can see what those numbers look like. But I wanted to just show you graphically, the bulk of our funding on the revenues, as you can see, come from the state, the LCFF funding. That's where the bulk of our money as a district, eighty-four million, comes from. So we're very reliant on the state doing well, and then a district will receive more revenue if the state's doing well. So you can see that. And then on the right side, you see our expenditures, the bulk of our expenditures come from our salaries and benefits. The three top categories in any district, including ours, are the salaries and benefits. And so I'll, I'll show you those numbers on, on the next slide, but just wanted to give you a graphic to show what that looks like. So here again are the numbers. So when we take a look on the revenue side of the house, for this year, we are projected to receive a hundred and thirteen million dollars in revenues. And I have an asterisk. I want to draw your attention to the red asterisk up there because that includes majority of the COVID nineteen funds. Normally, we do not receive that kind of money in federal revenue. And so I just wanted to point that out because on the next few slides, when we look at the multi-year projection, you will see a drop in revenue, and that is the number one reason right there is because of the COVID funds, the one-time funds are going away. We received them in twenty twenty-one, but we don't anticipate receiving them at this point, anything else in the future. On the expenditure side, we are, as you can see here, spending forty-one million in certificated salaries, fifteen million in classified, and twenty-eight million in benefits. So again, those are the top three expenditures in our district. And then as you look down, our total expenditures at this time are projected to be one hundred and fifteen million dollars. And so as I talk about in a few slides from now, the multi-year projection and ending fund balance, I want to bring to your attention, we talked earlier about deficit spending. And again, that's where our revenues are at one hundred and thirteen million. But then you can see our expenditures are at a hundred and fifteen million. And many districts experience this. This is not something that is caused by mismanagement of funds. It is just because our revenues have remained pretty flat and our expenditures increase every year. And so that's one of the things we will be addressing, as you'll see on some future slides. So here's the multi-year projection for twenty-one, twenty-two. And this is more in line with what we normally receive as a district. You can see here, the federal revenue is at six point three million. And I'm just going to flip right back to show you, eighteen million was that COVID money. And now you can see here on the slide at six point three million. That's generally about the amount of normal federal revenue we receive as a district. So again, that dropped our revenues down to a hundred million dollars, you can see in total revenue. However, on the expenditure side, you can see that no matter what we do, cost increase, as I'm sure you will see soon with your utility bills, when Southern California Edison imposes twenty-one percent hikes over the next three years. We have no control over that, but we do have to have electricity for all of our sites, and that's one example of services going up. But we also see an increase in normal and pension obligations, STIRS and PERS. So the district has to pay into the retirement pot for classified staff and PERS and STIRS for certificated. This is the money where people put in while they're working, and then they take out when they retire. Unfortunately, the state has underfunded both STIRS and PERS pots of money for retirees to be able to draw from. So what they do is they then have to increase the amount districts are putting in, and that's what we call an unfunded mandate. We have to come up with that money somewhere. The California state is, the state California has not given us that extra funding to be able to offset those costs. So we see that in the multi-year projection affecting us. We also have our normal step and column increases and range and step increases when people move up on the salary schedule. So we factored that in here as well. The other one I wanted to point out on this slide, and we'll talk about this in a, in another slide, is the other adjustment of four million. You might recall earlier I talked about on a slide that as we move forward, we need to really look at adjusting our expenditures downward in, as of right now, as of today, about four million in twenty-one, twenty-two. And you will also see that on the next slide, which looks very similar, but this is our multi-year projection for twenty-two, twenty-three. So again, for twenty-two, twenty-three, that's the third year out. We have about a hundred million in revenue, about a hundred and five million in expenditures, and our adjustment, again, four million there, you can see that. But as you look at this, we have our normal rises in expenditures, but the revenues are again remaining flat due to no COLA. If we had COLA, that would really decrease the gap between our revenues and our expenditures. But at this time, and at this point, until the state of California and Governor Newsom comes up with another plan, we are not receiving COLA. So our expenditures are continuing to go up, and our revenues are remaining flat. And so that's one of the things we have to monitor as a district, and we are doing that, and we are making adjustments as we need to. So here is just a bar chart to show you the revenues and then the expenditures. And that the revenues are in the green on the left side, and then the other expenditures again, as you can see for the multi-year projection, continue the, the gap between the revenues and expenditures continue to rise there unless something happens in the state and our revenues are able to creep closer to our expenditures. But currently, that is causing a lot of deficit spending because of the state of California, not through the dis- not through the fault of staff within the district or anything that we have or have not done. It is just something that is out of our control at this time, but we will do the best we can to be able to stabilize our budget as we move forward. And that's what I want to talk about on the next slide. So we, we mentioned the four million that we have to reduce in the out years. What are some ways that we are going to be able to do that? Well, one of the things is review the funds in the LCFF base in our supplemental concentration. And we want to make sure that they are aligned to the district mission and vision. We also want to look at the exploration of staff reduction through attrition and not filling vacancies. This is another way that the district can explore cost savings when someone retires or not filling a vacancy if someone leaves the district. So that's another way of looking at that. Also, we want to look at number three, freeze new hires unless operational necessity. So that's one of the things we can do as we move forward. We also want to do number four, maximize categorical funding such as Title One, Title Two, Title Three to offset general fund expenditures. And so as we move forward, we will be looking at that to see where we can spend those categorical funds first and then offset the, some of the general fund expenditures. We also want to make sure we're looking at our contribution to special education and see if there's any cost savings that we might be able to explore there in, in special education department. And then last, we want to review all cost savings due to the cost COVID nineteen pandemic closure. So for instance, if we're not spending money in certain areas, we might be able to look at that as far as the savings and apply that towards that four million dollars in expenditure reductions as we move forward. So early we talked about the TRAN, and just to refresh your memory, again, we have to be able to borrow money if we don't have cash because of the state of California. And we want to make sure that we are in a positive cash position, and we will borrow TRAN. And right now, the board did approve up to twenty-four million if we need it. Again, I want to state, if we need it, we may not need it. Again, we won't know until January, when the governor comes out with his proposal, what's going to happen to those deferrals already in place back in June from the state. So that's just another way that we are able to keep a positive cash flow. So here is the summary slide on the first interim, and I want to make sure that I gave a graphic representation and numbers about the long-term effects. So you can see here, I put in the twenty nineteen, twenty unaudited actuals. And refresh, refresh your memory, that's the report that came before the board in September and told us how we ended the year two thousand nineteen, twenty. So you can see there, we ended the year with an ending fund balance of twenty-six point five million. What that ending fund balance does is carries over to the next year in twenty twenty-one. And depending on if we're deficit spending, that's what helps offset our deficit spending. If we did not have money in that ending fund balance, we would not be able to sustain ourselves in meeting the three percent and offsetting the, and the, the deficit spending that you can see here in red as we move across the screen through the current year and through the out years. And so the twenty twenty-one projected revenues and expenditures there, as you saw earlier, the multi-year projection. And then, of course, I have the red asterisk, which talks about the four million in reductions that we will be looking at to stabilize the budget in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, twenty-three. And so you can see our deficit spending here in the third year out is about four point four million, and it drops our ending fund balance from twenty-six point five million to fourteen point three million. And what's included in that ending fund balance is our three percent that we, we are required to have. It's also restricted monies such as categoricals that we have to have in there. We have revolving cash, we have our stores in there, we have other funds that are, or other monies that are in there that are restricted to that. If we, again, if we did not have an ending fund balance to be able to carry us through, as Dr. Mitchell talked about earlier, we would not have a positive certification. And one of the things I wanted to address about enrollment, when we look at second interim, if the state will now impose enrollment in ADA back onto districts, we will adjust these numbers, and they could change if our enrollment doesn't creep back up or we don't get it back up to where it was before. So we would have to make those adjustments. And again, that would affect our revenues because we are funded through ADA. And as we look at our out years, that deficit spending could potentially increase a little bit. And so that any fund balance there is what's able to sustain us at this point. But we're optimistic again that hopefully the governor will recognize the need for school districts to receive additional revenue ongoing in his budget when he proposes in January to help our district and every district in the state. And so what are some of the next steps we're going to look at? In January, we're going to talk about the update on the governor's proposed twenty twenty-one budget. I will be present, presenting informational item on, on that to the board and to the community. And our district audit will also come to the board in January. In March, we will be looking at our second interim presentation with budget stabilization plan implemented in there based on what the governor proposes in January. In March through July, we will borrow funds if we need to using the TRAN, the tax revenue anticipation note. In May, we will give an update to the board and community, and the governors may revise. And as Dr. Mitchell stated, what's proposed in January can drastically change by May, depending on the circumstances in the state. And then in June, the board will adopt the budget for twenty-one, twenty-two and the multi-year projection. So those are some of the next steps as we look, as we move forward, and we are continuing to monitor what's going on in the state and with the, with the county of San Bernardino, so we have an idea of what we need to do for our fiscal health. And with that, I appreciate your time, and now I am more than happy to take any questions the board may have.
Okay, tr- trustees, do you have ques- questions?
Um, trustee Turner, Mr. Kraus, that was one of the best presentations on the budget, and it was clear, it was precise. You answered all of my questions because as the budget show, you know, on page two of the actual second interim, first interim, it says declining enrollment, you put no, no. And now I understand why you put no, is because they allowed us to freeze our, our enrollment at eighty-two hundred because we all know that we had declining enrollment. And, you know, and I asked Dr. Mitchell that question, and you explained it, I mean, spot on, so. And I like the next step. It was a slide here that I didn't get when you talked about. But I'm glad that you, you added that, you added that slide. I'm glad that you did that. So it was very clear, it was a very clear explanation because I was looking at our expenditures versus our, our money that we get. I'm like, wait a minute, and how can we pay our bills? You know, and I see how the ending balance, you know, how, you know, it was adjusted. Now, the four million dollars, that's going to be another conversation that we're going to have to have and look at the budget closely. So like I said, I, I have none. I'm, I'm satisfied, it's clear. So I understand, you know, where we going with this now. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Turner.
Trustee La, La French?
I'm, I'm just going to ditto what Ms. Turner just said, that your presentation was clear. I was able to understand everything. I appreciate it. I also think, you know, Dr. Mitchell, it seemed like, you know, you two must have read the same because I spoke to him, and it was like ditto. I was like, hmm. But nevertheless, I greatly appreciate it. So either you taught him or somebody, but I mean, I got the exact same answers to my question. It was very well put out. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, trustee La French.
Yes, and, and I, same thing, I was like, oh, oh. And if you really brought in the information, but it wasn't like, oh, my gosh, here, here's all the, the stuff. It was clear, I have a clear pic- picture, and you make me com- confident in your. And you make me com- confident in your, uh, bill, bill abilities to do what's best for our dis- this district because you, you really brought in a lot of information, but it was clear and to the point and I appreciate that.
Thank you, trustee Benz.
Can I say something else? I like the next step and, uh, and, and talking with Dr. Mitchell, um, I would like to do, I would like to see budget workshops so we can, because right now we're going to need to really, um, look at, look at our budget close. So I, in, in the future, we will be getting some, um, special meetings on that. So we can do budget workshops to see where we are, especially after January, after the update on the governor's proposal and then March and then before we even approve the budget in June. So I'm happy that, uh, this is amazing. I, 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 it's clear. I don't like where we are, I mean, but at least we know what we have to do in order to stay on, um, ahead of the curve. So, yes, and I also understand the deficit spending now. Um, that was the best presentation on deficit spending that, uh, I've heard in a long time. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Back to your point around a budget workshop. Uh, our team will go to work to, uh, develop some recommendations on a four million dollar cut in our out years. And we certainly will bring the, convene the board for a board workshop, uh, to discuss those recommendations and get, get the board's feedback input and direction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's go on to, um, new, new business, uh, for 14.001, um, approval of the 2020, 21 first in, in interim re- report. I, I need a motion. To approve. Okay, so I, I have a mo- mo- motion from trustee La French.
A second, trustee Turner.
Okay, got a second. Now we need a vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
Okay, now that pass, passes 300. We go on to 14, 14.002, approval of the LCFF bud- budget overview for parents. I need a motion to approve.
Trustee Turner, motion that we approve the budget overview for parents.
And I need a sec- second.
Um, I, yes.
So that's a sec- second from trustee La French.
Second, I'm sorry.
Okay, can I get ahead of the vote, please?
I know, just to be fair, when I was reading my notes, I didn't see that for 1302. So I was still reading like, well, what is she saying? So it doesn't say that on my notes, in all fairness to me. Okay, so what is the presentation? We need to talk about that. And we can't vote. What, what is it? What is the budget overview for parents?
Yeah, Mr. Kraus, can you give, uh, the board a brief synopsis of that report?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Mitchell, members of the board. So this is one of the requirements in lieu of the annual LCAP update. You might recall in years past, every time the first interim is presented, there was an annual LCAP update potentially briefing the board and the community on how the funds in the LCAP are being spent. Unfortunately, this year for 21, uh, for 2021, there is no LCAP, so to speak, uh, because it, because of COVID and the pandemic. And so the district still relied on the 1920 LCAP as many districts have. So this is a document that was created by CDE to just briefly give the board and the community an update on the funds and what we are doing, uh, for our increased services for our, uh, um, students. And so, uh, throughout the document, it's a simplified document for parents to be able to see, okay, what are some of the things we are doing? But again, it's not all exhaustive, it's not meant to be exhaustive such as the LCAP, but it's just a quick snapshot, uh, for this year only. I don't anticipate to, uh, seeing this again next year as I believe the LCAP will be back in force, uh, with the very detailed budget, uh, uh, document as well related to the goals and actions in the LCAP. So again, this is just a snapshot in time to show the district or show what the district is doing with, uh, funding, whether it's COVID funding, categorical funding, general fund in relation to supporting our students in district.
And, um, Mr. Kraus, could you talk about some of the things that we're doing, uh, other than, um, um, Chromebooks? Could you talk about some of the things that we're doing for our students?
Yes, absolutely. And, oh, sorry, I was going to turn that over to Dr. Mitchell and Dr. Williams to elaborate more on the academic.
So, so, so Dr. Williams, can you give us a brief snapshot of, uh, the things that we're doing in, uh, LCAP balance?
Board, as you know, uh, I think it was about two board meetings ago that we brought the LCP to the board. And within that plan, we identified all of the actions and services that we were, um, doing for our students. Um, one of them, uh, is intervention and enrichment, um, that we provided for students. Uh, also mental health services that we've also, uh, have within the district, uh, care solace, um, professional development, uh, increased, um, definitely increased professional development. Um, we purchased, um, various programs for our school site. So there is a laundry list of things within our LCP plan that are aligned to how we're supporting students and especially how we're supporting those high need students, um, within that plan. So the board did have an opportunity to review that. Uh, I don't have it in front of me, uh, but those are just a few of the many things that the board approved, uh, as a part of the LCP plan.
Okay, thank you. Now, in that plan, will it talk about because of distant learning? I know this is 1920, uh, we're still in 1920 school year. Um, it, does it talk about hotspots for students? Does it talk about the increase? Do we give student supplies, um, needed student supplies for those students that, um, work from home, I mean, study from home during distant learning? What are we doing for our students there in addition to Chromebooks and hotspots?
Absolutely. It did talk about, uh, all of the devices that we purchased, the hotspots we purchased. It talked about the training that we're doing for parents, uh, making sure that they're informed. Uh, again, the intervention is, uh, some of the work that we're doing. Uh, providing the mental health support is another service that we're providing to those students, uh, to make sure that, uh, they have the various, uh, supports to be successful in their classroom. Um, are just a few, uh, of the things that we're doing. And again, I apologize, I don't have, uh, the LCP plan in front of me. Um, increased, uh, uh, training opportunities for our teachers, which in turn, uh, goes down to the outcomes for, uh, our students being successful. Uh, again, as Dr. Mitchell shared, uh, as it relates to our, uh, POC plan for teachers and build, building the capacity of those teachers to, uh, you know, positively affect the outcomes for students, uh, is also additional work that we're doing.
Okay, so, um, and since this budget is for parents, how would the parents receive this budget? Do they know about it? Um, how can they know what's being provided for them? Or do they know?
So when we, when we did the, um, LCP plan, uh, we had over a thousand parents in various meetings, uh, where we rolled out the LCP, we explained, uh, everything that we were doing, the actions and services. Uh, we just had a DLEC meeting, uh, this past Friday, uh, where we also shared out with our DLEC parents what we're doing to support their students. Um, one of the things you saw tonight, uh, around the EOD training that we're bringing in, uh, to ensure that our teachers, again, that we're building their capacity for our students to be successful uh, in school that have the second language learners. Uh, we're also doing amazing work around our, our foster, um, youth and our homeless. Um, we have, um, the, the closing closet, uh, for families that are in need. Um, and again, um, a great deal of actions and services, uh, that we've laid out, um, for our, our students and families.
Okay. Okay, and any other que- questions or com- comments? Trustees?
I have none. Thank you.
Okay, so let, let's ta- take a vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I. Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
Okay, the pass, passes 300. Okay, now let's go on to 15, Paul, Paul, policy introductions, uh, updates and read readings, 15.01. Adopt and approve the first read reading for the board, Paul, policy 5146. Married, pregnant parent, parenting students. I need a mo- motion to approve.
I motion to approve.
And I need a sec- second.
Uh, trustee Turner, a second.
Second from Turner. Do we have de- disc- discussion?
No.
Okay, let's take a vote.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
Okay, this pass, passes 30. Okay, and, um, 6, 6, so 16, re- recessed, closed session. If necessary, we do not, so we're going to skip that. And let, let's go on to 7, 17, the superintendence re- report.
Thank you, Board of Educate, Board of Trustees. I appreciate your time tonight. I just got several, uh, announcements. I just want to make the public as well as the board aware of. And then I'll close with, uh, an overview of our professional learning and collaboration plan that I, that I talked about. That's really driving the professional development efforts of the district. So let me start out with some announcement. I want to again, uh, congratulate our own Beth Bartholomew, who was honored last night at AXS Region 12 as the Administrator of the Year. We're just so proud of her efforts and work and, uh, and positive changes she's enacting our district. So congratulations, Beth. I also want to, uh, give a shout out to our own, uh, Dr. Mary Thompson, uh, retired administrator in the district. She was also honored last night, uh, for the Robert E. Kelly Award, uh, for services. So we're, uh, so thank you for your service, uh, to Adelanto and, uh, congratulations. I, um, wanted to give a, a brief COVID update for our parents and viewing community. Um, as we've recently, uh, restricted access to our schools, uh, in response to the governor's stay-at-home order as a precautionary measure to protect the safety, health and wellness of students, staff and families. And we'll close the district office and all school sites to the pub, to the public as well as non-essential staff. As you're aware, the state of California and San Bernardino County and the High Desert Region has experienced a significant increase in the number of COVID-19 positive cases and hospitalizations. According to the San Bernardino County Department of Public Health, as of October 6th, uh, our, our AESD region, uh, had, was experiencing 15 daily cases per 100,000. That shot up on November 17th to over 35 daily cases. And then as of December 1st, it shot up to 74 daily cases. That represents a 390, 93% increase since October 6th. Additionally, we've experienced a huge, uh, spike in our own, uh, AESD staff, uh, either, uh, either, um, um, becoming positive, uh, COVID positive or having, uh, COVID, um, contact with others. And so as such, effective Monday, December 14th, uh, through Friday, January 29th, our district, um, will be shut down to the public and to, and to non-essential staff. We'll continue to provide a high quality distance learning for our students. Uh, we're asking that all non-essential staff work from home to the greatest extent possible. Uh, our staff will continue to, uh, to communicate with the public via phone, email and online virtual offices. Um, the district will provide the necessary tools and resources to our staff to maintain operations and student learning to the greatest extent possible. Um, our contact information, how you can contact all of our schools as well as the district office is on our website as well as our school websites, uh, as well as signage that's posted at our schools to, for parents to be able to contact our schools. It's hugely important to us that, that you be able to contact us. I haven't heard of any problems as yet. If you still have a problem, please call us at the district office. We're happy to help you. Child nutrition services will continue to serve, will continue to serve meals to our students. Um, uh, all special events convening staff, students and families will unfortunately be suspended until further notice. Um, and we'll ask all of our, our, our workers who will continue to provide essential services to our, to our, uh, families. Uh, please use, um, please follow our safe COVID-19 safety guidelines, including temperature checks, mask, personal protective equipment, social distancing. And then of course the rules, uh, regarding reporting exposure still are, still are in, in, in force. And so consistent with our Board of Trustees' commitment to the safety of our, of our families and staff, um, we'll continue to make decisions that adhere to, uh, the COVID-19 restrictions as detailed by the governor of the state of California, as well as the, the San Bernardino County Department of Public Health. And I want to thank our entire AESD community for your support and understanding as we work through these difficult times together. Uh, we will come out of this better. Uh, we will come out of this whole, and so we just want to, um, say, say have a safe and happy, uh, holidays as you, as you enjoy your families. But please, please, um, let's, let's stick strictly, uh, to, to our COVID-19 safety protocol so we can, we can beat this pandemic and we can reduce the curve and get back to business as usual. We miss our students, um, we miss, um, working, uh, seeing, or seeing each other as peers and colleagues. And it's going to be a great thing. It's going to be a great day when we can get back to business as usual. Some other announcements, um, staff are, are working on repairing the marquees at Mesa Linda, Columbia and Gus Franklin. So we're looking forward to getting those back up and running. Uh, you'll know, if you've seen our nutrition services staff, uh, we, we've, we've purchased pop-up tins, um, to, uh, get, get, provide a little bit of, of a comfort for our staff that are working out, handing out food. We thank you so much, uh, child, uh, nutrition service workers for, for the work that you do, um, and providing meals to our students. Um, our risk management, um, staff are, have been upgrading the emergency supplies at our schools and the emergency bins with, with, uh, water tablets and, uh, food bars and first aid kits. Most of these items have a limited shelf life. And so we're going through, uh, replacing all of our emergency preparedness, uh, bins as we speak right now. Um, I want to thank our human resource department, uh, for distributing, uh, PPE to now all of our substitute teachers and sub, and sub-staff have PPE equipment. Thanks for that. Um, our HR department is just working overtime, uh, conducting contact tracing and, and, and working hard to ensure that the appropriate, uh, staff are notified uh, when they potentially have been in contact with a COVID-19 positive case. And so thank you, uh, human resource, uh, uh, Ms. Kridill and your team for the work that you're doing to keep our, our, our community safe. Um, just a quick announcement about our benefits in compensation. American fidelity, uh, dependent verification and review is scheduled the beginning of January. And so I know that, uh, our HR systems will be sending out a lot of notices as it relates to, um, your, your, your benefits. Academic services, want to thank Dr. Williams for her leadership. Um, we, we will be starting for great, for quarter two, at the end of quarter two, for the first time, well, we will have uh, all of our report cards, K8, online in Aries. And so this will be a great benefit for parents. Parents now, K through eight, you will be able to go on the Aries and see your child's grades. Previously, this was only for, uh, middle school, but now we've just recently been working hard with staff to, uh, put all of our report, report cards online. And so that's going to be a great benefit for our parents to be able to see, uh, your child's progress in school. So thank you for the work that the academic services team has done. I also want to congratulate Dr. Williams' team, uh, for, um, the, the, the work they did on November 20th. We had another, uh, professional learning and collaboration day with our teachers. These things continue to get better and better, uh, great feedback for our speakers from teachers. We had over 350 of our teachers attend voluntary day, uh, that to invest in their own learning. So proud of our teachers, um, your commitment on the, on those days show how important, uh, your own learning is. Uh, it shows your commitment to your students to be the very- Shows your commitment to your students to be the very best that you can be in the classroom. I just want to thank you for your efforts and thank the academic services team for putting on another great day. We also had, we also just had another great fall festival where we were able to hand out turkeys and other food gifts to three hundred and fifty of our families representing more than five hundred kids. It's a really good day, really positive day. So thank you for all the staff that volunteered that day. And thank you for all the staff that showed up and helped us bless our AESD community. So thank you so much. And so with that, I want to take just a couple minutes, Board, to talk with you about something that we've been working on with our administrators. Since I got here in July, I started day one talking about having our principals lead a renewed commitment to professional development among our teachers. And so I just want to show you what you can expect to see when principals come present to the board in January. So I'm gonna share my screen and we'll jump right in. All right, let me get rid of this. Can you all see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Good, good.
The best I get.
So, good. When I got to the district, I introduced a methodology for staff development that I actually wrote and forwarded this work in San Bernardino for many years. It's been highly successful and wanted to bring that work here. It's really resonated well with our leaders here and well with our teachers here. Called Professional Learning and Collaboration Plan. And it's simple. Is that what teachers do matters. What teachers do matters. The major message is simple. What teachers do matter. However, this has become a cliche. The master fact that the greatest source of variance in our educational system is, it relates to teachers. The teaching varies in many ways. And so what we found is that is what teachers get the students to do in class that emerges the strongest component of the accomplished teacher's repertoire rather than what the teacher did. I'll say it again. It's what teachers are asking kids to do is emerging as more important than actually what teachers are doing. And so it is our intent to invest heavily in the professional development systems, adult learning systems at our schools. The reality of it is, is that our principals are leading two schools. They're leading two different schools. They're leading one university for adult learning and they're leading another school for students. Our teachers are responsible for providing the education for students. Our leaders are responsible for creating an environment of professional learning and collaboration among the staff. We know that good schools are highly collaborative. They have teachers sharing practice. Teachers are constantly talking about instructional practice and how to get better. So our best schools are our most reflective and the best working environments for teachers. And so I just want to share a clip from a young lady.
I remember taking this test that most of.
I want to share a clip from a young lady. She was a student board member in San Bernardino, little bright young lady, senior in high school. And she made, she made the conclusion about teaching. And I shared this video because, number one, it floored all of us that she made this kind of connection about the relationship between what teachers do and student success. And one of the things that I found is that when we listen to the voices of our students as it relates to teaching, we get an insight into what's most important to kids. And so let me have a couple minutes to have you listen to this video. Let me go back.
But I remember taking this test that most of the questions are open-ended, like they're free response. They're not multiple choice or something you can quantitatively measure. So I'm assuming someone has to read them at, you know, at the state level. But is all the data that you receive, whether people met standards or not? Or is there some sort of more detailed data? Because if all you receive is whether or not a student met the standard, how can you extrapolate teaching strategies if all it says is, this is wrong, but not why? Does that make sense?
Can you ask a harder question?
I'm sorry. I didn't know.
We trying to get through this presentation and.
I'm terribly sorry.
You're slowing us off with these difficult questions. So along with student achievement data, a huge variable or dataset that we consider is classroom observation. So some of the qualitative things and strategies that teachers use on a day-to-day basis. Those are what we call the leading indicator. So what teachers are doing is a leading indicator. And this final test data is a trailing indicator. So we're not gonna go back to those eleventh graders and have them retake the test or so on and so forth. But what we do do is our principals are monitoring instruction and sharing best practices and having, to the principal's point, having teachers collaborate to share what they're doing that works. And we're creating systems that create opportunities for principals to share what they're doing, what works. And so the qualitative data or the things that teachers are doing on a daily basis is the why behind the numbers. The numbers are important, but they're a starting point for us. And so I agree with you that just looking at data alone does not tell you what to do next. But it gives us a direction to go look into. And so we'll get into classrooms where we feel like we're getting good data because those teachers are obviously doing some things in terms of instructional practices that are working for kids. So I hope that answers your question a little bit.
So if I understand correctly, instead of sort of like getting a graded copy back of everyone's test, you get the results of their test and try to correlate them with teacher practices?
Absolutely.
Yes, okay.
Absolutely, and principal practices.
Okay, all right. I was just wondering how it was possible to figure out what to do if all we got was the student passed and the student failed. But I think I understand now. Okay, thank you for your presentation. It was very informative and I wanted to reaffirm what, I believe it was Dr. Lundie said about needing to make sure that the teachers learn best practices because, I mean, most of the adults we interact with at school are teachers. So even if the principal or the school district wants something to be achieved among all of our students, if not all the teachers understand how to do that, I can, I think it's reasonable to assume it probably won't work as well. So I think that's a really good practice and I think it was a good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Remy.
So you see here that this young lady was, as a student, as an engaged student, is able to understand the relationship between what teachers do and student success. And so what we've launched out here in San, I mean, excuse me, in Adelanto is the Professional Learning and Collaboration Plan. So the PLCP is an action plan that fosters continuous improvement of schools through focused professional learning and collaboration activities for the purpose of growing the skill, knowledge, and capacity of classroom teachers to provide high-quality instruction. This plan is developed with teacher input. All of our teachers have been involved in the development of their school's plan and is designed to strengthen the school's professional learning systems, inclusive of their professional development time, when their professional collaboration time, when teachers are actually meeting together. It also aligns what feedback administrators are giving to teachers as they're observing classroom. And then it aligns performance management. What are we measuring to determine if we are meeting our outcomes by in June? So the question that I ask principals, what does your school, what do you want your school to look like in June? And how would you measure that? And so our principals have all launched up to develop this plan. How are the professional learning folk I established? The professional development folk I for schools have been collaboratively developed and established by school leaders, teachers, and support staff by triangulating three pieces of data. And they did, they collected these data in September and October. So what I'm suggesting here is that each school has said, hey, this, if we learn, if all of our teachers learn how to do X and implement it with high fidelity and quality, we believe that doing X strategy in the classroom will accelerate student performance. And so that's the idea. And this can't be the same for all schools. All schools are made up of the people who work there. Otherwise, they're just buildings. And so what professional development is needed at one school may not be relevant at another school because what, because schools are made up of people. And people are different. And people are on different places in the continuum of performance and may need things and also may have different challenges as it relates to the student bodies they serve. And so we asked principals to guide their schools through three aspects to triangulate the following data. So number one, we gave a professional learning and collaboration needs assessment to all of our teachers. We asked teachers, hey, what is it that you're interested in learning? What do you think as a teacher that if you were able to do these things in the classroom, it would inspire and foster improved student achievement? We didn't ask teachers what's wrong with the kids. We didn't ask them what's wrong with the school. We asked them, what do you need as a professional in order to grow and learn and get excited about the craft of teaching and the science and art of teaching that you think would accelerate student performance? So we asked, we started out with a survey of what is it that teachers wanted to learn? Secondly, we asked administrators to go around to all of the classrooms and identify best practices. And so I asked, so this is, this is, this is, this is a departure from how administrators have learned to be administrators in the clinical supervision of teachers. Administrators have learned to go into classrooms and figure out what's wrong and then tell teachers, hey, here, fix this, fix that, fix that. Now, that creates a really negative learning environment for teachers and working environment for teachers. Instead, I asked our principals and leaders to study success. What are teachers, what's working well at our schools? What are teachers excited about at our schools? And then let's document that and then build on our strengths instead of studying our weaknesses. And so I asked administrators to go around to every classroom in September and October to get a sense for what are the best practices happening right now at our schools. And then thirdly, we asked, we asked our administrators that we know that the data is old. Last cast data was in two thousand and eighteen. But we also were in the midst of administering star assessments and other diagnostics to give a sense for what were kids were. So I asked principals to take those three datasets and then give that information back to teachers and then ask teachers to determine what is the professional learning folk I that we will focus on at Gus or at Adelanto or at Melva Davis, any of our schools. We asked them, what is it that if all of our teachers learned and were able to do at a high level, what would accelerate student achievement? And then, and so that's how the professional learning plans were developed. And so they have four parts. We've asked each school to establish, one to two, high-leverage instructional strategies, mindsets, or approaches that when implemented with high fidelity and quality, you'll hire levels of student engagement and improve student outcomes. We didn't want to just be choosing strategies that made teachers feel good. We wanted to make, we wanted to choose strategies that made teachers feel good, that made teachers feel excited about the craft of teaching and that would encourage and foster high levels of student engagement as well as student performance. Number two, we want to create defined performance outcomes for teachers because teachers are the variable, not students. So we know, we know that there are teachers that are being highly successful in schools next door to teachers who may not be experiencing the same amount of success with the same kids, in the same zip code, in the same school. And so the question for us becomes as school leaders, how do I replicate the best practices of this teacher across the school? And then, so, and you do that by creating collaborative synergistic culture where teachers are sharing practices and strategies. And it's about, it's about giving permission to de-privatize classroom practice. We're making classroom practice not private. We're making classroom practice a community of practice in the school. And so we want to have defined performance outcomes for each of our teachers. Number three, we want our principals to learn how to implement a professional learning model that provides adequate time and meaningful experiences for teachers to learn. I'm gonna learn something new. I'm gonna have time to plan it and incorporate it into my lesson design. I'm gonna have time to practice it and get feedback from my peers and administrators on how I'm doing on that, on that, on that, on that, that strategy. And then time to refine it by watching other people see it. When we open up schools, I envision our schools having joint professional developments, our schools visiting each other, our schools, why not have two schools plan across grade levels? There's just no reason. Here's the thing. If you go to Silicon Valley and you walk into any number of those tech giants and you walk into their buildings, they no longer have cubicles and offices. These buildings are just these flat places where people in design and people in marketing and people in tech are all working together to create a product. That's why the tech energy industry is able to come out with a new cellphone every three months or a new Xbox or a new Playstation because they're working, they're working across lines. Whereas teaching is one of the most private and lonely occupations in America. I mean, our teachers go in that classroom and they shut that door and they don't know, they don't know if I'm hitting it, if I'm hitting the mark, if I'm not hitting the mark. How good am I in relation to other teachers? And I want to de-privatize that. And I don't want people getting hammered about it. I want people being vulnerable with each other. And I want our leaders to be vulnerable with each other so that they learn how to capitalize on the collective mindset and the collective genius that we all are. And lastly, number four, I want to create, I want our principals to create multiple forums for teachers to apply professional learning. So here's what happens so much in education. We'll go to these conferences and you will hear all this cool stuff. And we'll get excited about the things that we're learning. But then we go back to the campus and we don't have the time or the energy or the support to really incorporate those new learnings into, excuse me, into the lesson plan. So I always say, if you don't change the lesson plan, you didn't do any staff development. Period. The lesson plan is the smallest unit of change. It's the teacher's lesson plan. And we have to impact it. We have to give time for teachers to plan together. Because I can't tell you how many things I go to as superintendent, really good stuff. And I wish I had time to implement some of this stuff. But reflection and planning is a necessity as it relates to change. And so, and so here's what it looks like. Here's just a graphic what it looks like. So here's our current reality, our current test scores is based upon our professional learning systems. And those professional learning systems create the normative teaching practices, what's normally happening in our district. And then those teaching practices create the outcomes that kids are getting. So what we're learning, what we're teaching gets our student performance. What I'm suggesting is creating a professional learning and collaboration plan that changes the professional learning, that changes the normative teaching. So the bell curve moves over to the right and then student achievement moves over to the right. It does not happen the other way around. It does, it just doesn't. That good schools have good leaders and awesome teachers. And that's what we have to create. So I've asked our principals to all create these plans. They'll come to you beginning in January, three schools at a time, and present their plans. And they're excited. They've been trying their plans out on us and we've been giving them good feedback. And the other thing, I'm sitting in their staff meetings. I'm hearing the narrative change in our school. I'm hearing, I'm seeing how our principals are opening up these lines of collaboration and communication among teachers. It ain't perfect everywhere, Board. I ain't even trying to snow you and act like it make you think like, boom, everything's perfect because it's not. People are learning how to work in this way. But we're supporting that and we're so excited for the principals to come bring that, bring those presentations to you. Any questions?
Wow, that was amazing. Trustee Turner, that was absolutely amazing. You know, I've been wanting to hear more about what's happening and how we're gonna go about changing the mindset of teaching in our district. And that's a great plan. And I'm looking forward to January. I'm not looking for perfection. I'm just looking for something to, you know, like you said, you know, move that bell curve and increase student performance academically. You know, move that bell curve and and increase student performance academically. Engagement on parents and teachers to get the teachers excited about coming into the classroom. Right now, doing distant learning, I know it's difficult, but I'm 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 excited, you know, and and to hear what's happening. Because we haven't heard anything in months and months. And now I see, you know, the plan. And I I'm looking forward to seeing it implemented and seeing it work for our students and our parents and our teachers and our principals. And our district, you know, so yeah. Great, great.
Trustee La La French?
I just want to say that, you know, that I enjoyed that presentation. I'm very excited. Can't wait till January to hear, you know, the first principles and I'm excited. I thank you. That was a good one. Thank you.
I I love you the passion that came through and I'm like, you're like, yeah, I got all excited. So you know, I I too cannot wait and thank, thank you for the information. And yeah, it's it's great. It's, I really. I see our dis- district move moving forward. And that that gets me me excited.
Thank you. Just one last comment, board. I want to congratulate Trusty Turner for. Being elected as president tonight. Congratulate Trustee La French for being elected as clerk. As well as you, Trusty Benz, for for your being represented and looking so forward to our leadership together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell.
Okay, well, we have, it is nine twenty twenty-two. We're supposed to end at nine thirty. Do we want to rush eight eighteen? Or do we want to add on time for 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 the gov- the board mem? Members re- reports? Or do we want want to waive them, board?
I I just want to say a couple, if we could go a minute each, I would like to see that because we do have a couple of minutes, right?
Go ahead and go.
You wanna go, LaShawn? I'll go, I'll go, I'd go. I just want to say thank you. To the board, you know, for electing me as president and. And trusting me and doing that. And I I I tell you, I want. I don't want it to be just me meeting with the superintendent. I want all of us like. Because all of us need to know what's happening and all of us need input. I won't be as stringent. As we're putting things on the agenda as before, you know, the current process. You know, because things happen at the last minute and we may want to see something on the agenda. And I think it's a learning process for all of us, you know, and again, thank you for all the reports today. I know that everything had to be unanimous vote and, you know, the presentation made that work and the. Information given that was clear and precise. I know, Dr. Mitchell, you sounded tonight like you did in your interview when you interviewed for the position of superintendent. And I know that I've been having, we've been having conversations about, we don't know what's going on. We haven't heard anything, what's going. You know, so the information coming forward is amazing and that's what we want to hear. We want to hear what's happening at our schools. Even though we can't be there, we want, we want to hear what's happening. And I'm happy to hear that things are moving along. So I just want to put that out there. And again, thank you for the flowers and. And I'm looking forward to an exciting school year.
Thank you.
Okay, Trusty La 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 French?
I'll be very brief. I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to. All of our staff members, you know, at the district. Thank you to everyone that is putting in and. I want everyone to have, you know, a restful, you know, a break. Stay safe. Dr. Mitchell, I'm very proud of you. I appreciate, you know, our conversations this week. I appreciate your presentations. I appreciate the cabinet and everyone, you know, today was very successful. And I leave here, you know, laughing and smiling that, you know, that throughout this pandemic, we're on our way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, alright, um, yeah, Tracy Turner Turner hit 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 the nail. Nail on the head when she said about about the interview because I was thinking that. As you were speak, speaking, it's like, it's like, oh, my God, flashback, right? Because that's. What like, oh, that's what made you stand out was the passion. Passion and the direct rec- erection. Um, I know the distance learn, learning has been hard. I know the COVID restrictions. They are trying for, they're trying on ev- everyone. The other day I had to go and beat beat the couch with the pillow. Pillow because I I had hit the sea of ceiling. I want to wish everyone good health. I want to thank you all for all you you've done. And I want to wish. Trusty Heinz a quick re- recove- recovery. And I'm I'm not not sure if Trusty X is sick as as well, but I trust that they both. Get get bet better so that they they can join us. And that that's all I've got. So let's go to nine nineteen point one. Uh, German, German, can I get a mo- mo- motion?
I motion to adjourn.
I need a sec- second.
I second, Trusty Turner, I second.
Okay, and I need a vote.
Trusty Benz?
Benz, I.
I.
Trusty Turner.
Trusty Turner, I. Merry Christmas, everyone. Happy holidays.
It is nine twenty seven seven PM. We are adjourned. Everybody have a great night.
Trusty Ben.